I've been, I've been happy since five AM.
Anytime you don't wake up dead, you're good, you know.
Man, you doing alright? You alright, amen, okay, alright, ain't no need of being sad because the world is sad. Okay, you ready?
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Montgomery County Commission Information Session. Before Commissioner Sankey opens us with a word of prayer, I'm gonna repeat this a couple of times just because our next meeting will be August the ninth. We had a little change, so I'm gonna repeat it a couple of times during the information session and then the formal session just to make sure nobody shows up here on August the second looking to meet with us, so. Commissioner Sankey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone, let us bow for a word of prayer. Father, we're so grateful and so thankful to you this morning, Lord God, for the gift of life. We thank you for sparing us, for watching over us last night, Lord God, as we slumbered and slept. We thank you for opening our eyes to a brand-new day where there are brand-new mercies. So we ask, Lord God, that you, we invite you in, your Holy Spirit into this chamber, Lord God, to just rest rule and abide with us, to guide our decision-making and to help us to be cordial toward one another, Lord God, as we conduct the business of county government. We thank you now for all that you're doing in our lives, in spite of what's going on around us. We're gonna remain steadfast and dedicated to the truth, which is what matters. So thank you now for this another day, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Good morning. Our visitors for today will be Sheriff Cunningham, Grants Administrator Regina Walker, Executive Director Phil Bryant with Community Corrections, and Director of Governmental Affairs for Amwaste, Cal Franklin. We can go over the items to be considered at the formal session. We will start with two public hearings, then the new business and alcohol license application for Latino Festival on August thirteenth. Consider the 2021 Annual Report of Insolvent, Errors in Assessment and Taxes in Litigation with Corresponding Resolution. Consider a resolution authorizing a project agreement and related documents for use and grant of public funds and things of value in aid of Hyundai Trans System Georgia Seating System. Consider an architect agreement with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood for renovation of the Alabama Department of Human Resources Facility in Montgomery County. Consider miscellaneous appropriations for agencies, are there any additions? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. There is an addition of thirty-three hundred dollars from Chairman Singleton for Pike Road High School for Athletics. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue, are there any additions there?
Florence, I don't have my, my document open yet. Do I have any, any designated for AUM this round?
You have Montgomery Gray Girl Softball League for Softball Darlings.
But nothing for AUM? Alright, I need to do fifteen hundred for AUM Baseball.
Would that be AUM Dixie Baseball and Softball League?
Correct.
Because?
And it's gonna be Attention Jeff Branch, B-R-A-N-C-H.
And I'm sorry, that was fifteen hundred from your designated revenue?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright. I'm sorry, let me get back. Consider budget change request number one for the detention facility. Consider budget change request number fourteen for engineering. Consider changing the pay range of the payroll and benefits assistant based on the personnel department pay analysis. Consider a position fill request for the detention facility. Consider a position fill request for the engineering department. Consider position fill request for the sheriff's office for two deputy sheriff trainees and a part-time deputy sheriff. Consider a position fill request for the youth detention facility for juvenile detention officer. Consider travel training requests from the detention facility, the engineering, and the sheriff's office. So we can hear from our visitor, Sheriff Cunningham.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Yeah, that was my bones popping when I got up back then. I'm just, I guess I got a little old today.
Too young for that, Sheriff.
Yeah, I got up, my knees said pow, so I said, let me get on down here. Good. I had to break the ice, everybody sitting here all quiet. Okay.
Okay, Sheriff, we want you to talk about first item number four, the contracts for housing juveniles from other counties.
Oh, this is standard contract we get every year. Hopefully, we can go ahead and waive rules on those because we gotta send them to the other counties to get them to sign them. And if not, we're gonna be waiting a couple more weeks to be able to get that done. This is the same contract that you all have done, I guess, in the past couple of years with these other counties. And I still, we still gotta go through their process of getting their commissioner to, to pay for them.
Sheriff, that Elmore and Atallah County, they have a standing agreement, they get one bed, right?
Yes.
Whether they use it or not, they still pay him, right? And if they add additional beds?
Then that, that's where that rate'll come in.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's where I read that.
Yeah.
No objections for me.
Next agenda.
No, waive rules.
I need to waive rules so we can get it sent to them, get it signed.
Any objections to waiving rules?
No objection.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the sheriff will discuss item number five, which is Auburn Game Day Professional Services Contract.
It is the same as we do with them every year, providing deputies to work the football games. So I just submit it to you.
All their home games are five in a row.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
They don't pay travel though, do they?
No, they just pay, just overtime, standard overtime. And they reimburse you all to, to pay them.
Any questions on that? Next agenda.
Alright.
Sheriff, there's been a, there's been some hard news over the past couple months in Alabama, but also around the country with sheriff's deputies. And I just wanna let you know that you, you and your entire staff are always in my prayers. And it's never lost on me the risk you guys take every single day. So thank you for what you do, and, and even when we're not saying it, please know how strongly we feel and appreciate you.
Well, thank you, huh, that means a lot, I mean.
It's tough out there.
It's getting tougher, so I do appreciate that, and I'll make sure I pass it on to my people. Thank you all.
Next we'll hear from Regina Walker.
Good morning.
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 What's the first? Oh, Jag. This is Burn Jag, Greg, this is a standard sixty forty split with the city in Montgomery, done annually with sheriff's office and MPD basically for an equipment grant.
What number is that?
It's waive rule item. Is that the waive rule item, number two?
Number one.
Number one, oh, I'm sorry.
It's a waive rule because we got to get it to the city, they got to sign it tonight, it's on their agenda as well at city council.
I'll have a check.
Thank you.
Any objections to waive?
What is that again?
Number one, item number one. It's agreement between the city and the county for regarding the justice assistance grant for sheriff's office. You good?
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
And then item number two.
This is a new grant for us, this is a broadband technical assistance grant provided by ADECA. It has no monetary value, but what it does have is assistance with the contractor and consultant that ADECA uses to do their statewide connectivity plan. If we are selected and we are working in conjunction with my counterpart, Calbury, at the city to submit our application. So we figured it was an opportunity to try to get our feet wet on our, one of our first collaborative grants and try and see if we can help offset the cost of broadband planning for Montgomery.
Ms. Walker, you say it.
What do you get for it?
You get access to the consultant that ADECA uses to do their, every year they have to do an annual connectivity plan statewide. And this consultant will work with you based on plans you have for your individual county and jurisdiction and help you develop some of the things that will make you competitive for grant funding. While it's no monetary value with the grant or no money being awarded for the grant, it saves you money on the back end because that's less you will have to do in preparation for grants.
She gotta pay the consultant?
No, sir.
It's an opportunity to pay somebody?
ADECA pays all.
ADECA pays all of that. If you get the grant, you get the technical assistance from the consultant, which is free. And you get all of the things that you normally, not all, a lot of the things that you would normally get with a consultant, the mapping in your area, some of the other, possibly if we need to do a citizens' participation plan, we could do those kinds of things. I talked with Rodney and IT to look at some of the areas we were talking about targeting, where we know our broadband is weak and could use strengthening.
You're not asking to waive rules on this, are you?
Yes, sir, because it's due on August first.
This is an opportunity, more than anything, to build some relationships with ADECA, with their digital expansion department and get to know their consultant, understand what, what they look for.
I don't have any problem with, with this, I mean, it's nothing, it's nothing, we don't owe anything, we're not gonna have to do anything. Does ADECA still have an Office of Broadband?
They did, they created a year ago a digital expansion division, Maureen Neighbors.
They had one for many years, and then they didn't have one for a while, and now.
Maureen Neighbors is their director over their digital division, and she is the contact for this grant.
It's just strange to me that a state agency receiving federal funding would make counties and municipalities pay for access to information. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I just think this is odd, the first I've heard of it. This should be something that is, that counties and municipalities have access to without having to be awarded a grant. It's just strange to me.
Actually ironic, I looked at the ADECA.
Connectivity Plan?
Yeah. This morning, I, it just, I wasn't looking for that, but I saw it, and I looked at it, I looked through it briefly. But, so I have it on my computer that.
If you remember in the ARPA meeting, Terry shared that while they do a connectivity plan every year, it doesn't drill down from address to address. And so if you need something a little bit more in-depth for, particularly the rural areas of Montgomery County, then this is an opportunity for us to study that. We are getting data from Lewis Hines at Alabama State University because they're doing it by census tract. So we can target some of the areas you may be concerned that are broadband deficient.
But this one I've got on my computer does address by, because it says, check connectivity of your address. Now, I didn't click it or look at it, but I mean, it's on, I'll look at it today.
Okay.
But anyway, is there any objection to waiving rules for this?
No, I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any correlation between this technical assistance and what we're doing with ARPA money or what we're, the proposal is for ARPA money in terms of studying, providing some type of study for broadband and, and looking at those areas that might have been deficient? Is there a correlation between what you're doing with ADECA and what Levitate wants to do with spending some of the ARPA funding to study broadband? Because I always thought it was kinda strange with millions, billions of dollars coming for broadband, I thought maybe ADECA, which I guess is the designated state agent to receive these monies, would just make service and money available to anyone in, any entity in Montgomery County that might have been deficiency in broadband. You know, when we had the, the, at the height of the COVID, well, you know, we had the school buses being parked with the hotspots and so forth for the children. So it seemed, again, with all due respect, it seems like we oughta already know where the deficiencies are and not time or, well, I won't say waste time or money because I respect what you do, but waste time or money on a study. I, I was suggesting to Terry, one of the partners with Levitate, that she oughta call the school board and find out where they park these buses at during the height of the COVID. That oughta give us some insight into where the deficiencies are.
Again, we're just, we're just asking.
Yeah, and I, I think, just in response to Commissioner Sankey's point, I think this is another great tool, it's fine, let's have this tool. I think getting data from MPS is great, it's another great tool. We've got bits and pieces of this puzzle, this countywide broadband, where do we have deficiencies? We've got bits and pieces, nobody's ever done a detailed exhaustive study specifically of Montgomery County. And for that, we've got to have a consultant that can do that for us. Maybe it's the consultant that ADECA has already engaged, that's fine, you know, but, but this process that we've already got the ball rolling on with the city and the county to get a thorough, specific study on broadband, that needs to move forward. These other bits and pieces are great, but they're simply that, bits and pieces.
Is there any objection to waiving rules today?
I don't have an objection.
I, I, I'm still puzzled, but I.
It is puzzling, it is puzzling, I'm with you on that.
I won't object to it, but it's just, you know, when it says grant, that somebody got paid. Somebody's getting paid. We're not, we're not, the money's not passing through us.
I'm just curious, how many of these grants are they going to? I hope they've got sixty-seven grants that they're gonna offer, and all counties have to do is sign up to get this service, let me know that.
I will.
Thanks, Regina, we appreciate you.
Shall I do my other one since I'm up here, or it's a different place on the agenda, come back?
Yes, please do.
Okay. The last one is the weatherization grant, this is the annual grant from ADECA to help with energy efficiency for low-to-moder income homeowners. And this is, my understanding is the first allocation. This is the contract for the first allocation of thirty thousand five sixty-nine, the total award was one hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and four dollars.
No match is required?
No, sir.
This CARPDEC would be administering this?
Yes, sir.
I always wondered, we don't, we're not able to get listings of those individuals who may have benefited from, from this program. We always been told that it's some type of secret, I don't understand that public money is being spent, but we never know who benefit, or if anybody benefit.
I shared your same concerns, so I reached out to Mr. Tim Fletcher. He is the State Monitoring Officer for ADECA, and shared with him that as the grantee, that we would like access to that information. So we are working with CARPDEC to make sure we can share that information. If there's something in there that's particularly identifying and we need to redact it, then we would do that. But at least you may have an address or first name, last initial or something. So we are working to get that.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
You're welcome.
Alright.
Next agenda.
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Phil Bryant with Community Corrections.
Good morning. Community Corrections has to submit an annual plan to the Department of Corrections in order to receive funding back from them. And that plan has to be approved by the county commission, so I'm asking that you all put that on the next agenda. I emailed you all that plan on last week.
Phil, I've been getting work on my eyes and haven't been able to read like I like to. What, what, are there any changes from?
It's just minimum changes to that plan from last year. I think the biggest, well, the budget, of course, changed. Let's see what else changed in that plan. I think the appointments, the appointments for the board, that changed.
Appointments for?
Right. Only because their term had expired, so we had to put the new letters in there. But really, that's the biggest changes in there.
We're still doing the same process with, in terms of getting individuals coming through the system, coming out into ours? We still have the same criteria for?
Yes, sir.
For considerations?
We do.
Phil, how much do you anticipate state funding to be support?
Well, I'm hopeful that we can get three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars or more.
Three seventy-five or more?
Right. We are.
What did we get last year?
That, that, you're right, I'm, I'm not quite sure. Because of, because of COVID, of course, our numbers went down because, of course, the courts closed. They have this backlog. So we're getting additional people in now, and so I, I think that we can meet that. If we continue like we are, because last, I think last month, we got about fourteen additional participants in the program. And so if we continue to do that, then I think that we can meet that projection.
Any other questions for Mr. Bryant? And next agenda.
Thank you.
Before we hear from Cal Franklin with Amwaste, I'd like for us to consider our other waive rule item, which is the resolution to approve Phase Two of the Montgomery Thrive Initiative. This was as discussed at our last meeting on?
Monday.
Yes, July eleventh.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm a little concerned by a number of things that relate to the ARPA funding. I, I think it seems, well, to me, that we forgot the priorities that the Treasury had outlined in terms of helping, you know, low-income communities, communities of color, and those who had suffered disproportionately as a result of the pandemic. Now, those people are still out there, they still hadn't received any help. And it seems like, again, with all due respect to the people that are involved, seems like we're trying to, we're dragging our feet. And, and I'm concerned that our, that Levitate, based upon, you know, some of the things I hear in the meetings and so forth, and some of the people who are coming seeking funding, it seems like they have become more of a lobbying agent, agency as opposed to consultants that's supposed to help us understand Treasury guidelines. So I'm a little concerned about that. I'm also concerned that, now, I understand economic development, maybe not as much as some of my colleagues, but I do understand economic development, I understand that trails, recreation of trails have some, you know, potential to grow our economy, to bring folks to Montgomery County and to generate revenue that will help stabilize our tax base. But when we talk about, you know, generating revenue, I'm always concerned that it's not a trickle-down effect that it rarely gets back to some of the communities that I serve. So I'm just concerned about that. So I'm not, I'm not for waiving rules on this because there are some things on here that I don't necessarily agree with. It seems like we're putting our priorities ahead of the, the main, I guess, thing that Treasury wanted us to do. And we can't continue to fund every little idea, you know, even though it may be a good idea, that people bring to us, and so I'm just concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the opening a contract that we have with Levitate. I, I don't think we, we can point to anything in the history, at least not since I've been here, of this county where we have contracts that are open-ended and we just kind of bill for as long as we, you know, provide services, there are no deadlines, you know, no timetable, anything of that nature, at least not for what I'm aware. So I'm concerned about that. So I'm not gonna be for waiving rules on this because I need to get back with them to really find out exactly, you know, where the priorities are and do we really ever intend to get any of this money to the people that were targeted by Treasury because of the disproportionate impact that the virus had, the pandemic had on that particular population. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Harris, Walker, any comments?
Does this impact, thank you, Commissioner Sankey, where are we on the broadband study? What, what action needs to happen for the city and county to move that forward?
That was part of this resolution.
That's in this resolution.
Can, can that not be freestanding? Can we discuss that freestanding if, if?
Well, I mean, I have, if we're gonna do that, I have something on here that I want freestanding.
Well, right, and Commissioner Harris, you were not at the meeting. I know that you had a good reason for not being able to be there on Monday. And the, the consensus from the group as a whole, we actually voted on it. There was nothing that really had consensus from Monday's meeting except pushing forward the broadband study. And we were hopeful after, you know, because it's just the study, and without the study, then we won't be able to go for any funds that the feds or state might make available, have available for us. So we were all kind of anxious to, at least, at the very least, to Commissioner Sankey's point, let's get the ball rolling on something, and that was something that the group agreed on, to just get the study. It's just a study so we know where our deficiencies are in Montgomery County. But that would require action on the part of the city and the county to approve that.
I'm, I'm, you know, I, I support waiving rules on this thing. But I do not support pulling one thing out and going forward on one thing at a time. That's the best way to, in my mind, that's the best way to end up not doing very much of anything. I don't fully understand Commissioner Sankey's concerns because one of the cardinal rules of, of expending these funds is that none of it, none of it is intended and should go for any economic development projects. And there aren't any in here that I can see that's geared toward economic development. They may have an impact on economic development, but they must also impact the main purposes of ARPA. Now, if we can't get it done today on waive rules, I'd like to see this thing done intact, and we're just next agenda.
Well, and, and, and just to be clear, the, the conversation was, and those that were in attendance, the conversation was that the funding for the broadband study wasn't going to come out of ARPA funds, that was going to come out of city and county general fund.
Well, this should be a part of it.
Am I, am I, am I misremembering that?
That was not my understanding.
It wouldn't be on here if it were.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be, based upon my understanding, Commissioner Walker, ARPA funding.
Right, because they said that we needed to have skin in the game, is, can we?
I think what the skin in the game would be that we had had the study done, and the skin in the game is to represent ADECA for future funding.
Again, this res, this is just a resolution.
That's not my memory of it.
Yeah, there's no dollar amounts attached to this, there's no, we would still have to come back and vote.
Right.
Individual, each one of these, these are just a resolution to allow Levitate to move forward.
For example, with this study, it would be to prepare an RFP to get responses.
We can move it to next agenda.
This isn't agreeing to anything, and this isn't agreeing to expend any monies. It's simply agreeing to allow Levitate to move these concepts forward. This is still very conceptual. And to do a little further research and to put out an RFP, for example, on doing a broadband study. We still don't have to do it. But at, at some point, again, to Commissioner Sankey's point, is very well taken. At some point, we've got to start taking action on some of these things.
But this is, you gotta do this in order to be in a position to take the action.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I have no objection with waiving rules on this.
I wasn't at the meeting, but I, I did get about an hour briefing from Terry on what happened at the meeting. And my understanding was there was a consensus to move forward with this Phase Two.
Right, there was.
In that committee, and that's, and this is all a part of Phase Two. So if we have a commissioner who won't agree to waive rules, then we just put it on the next agenda and vote on it.
Yeah, we can do that, because city's gonna do the same thing.
Well, the last time the city didn't pass, if we passed one, the city did. Took them a week, I mean, we, this. Took them a week. I mean, we, this, you know, I, 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 I understand, uh, I understand the concerns, but I, I can't, I don't, I don't see them happening in any of these, uh, proposals so far. I think everything that, uh, uh, that I've supported on here and that I do support, uh, goes toward those, it's, 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 it's going toward the individuals that were affected the most, uh, uh, during the pa- pandemic. And it's, uh, in order, and it's putting in place those type of facilities and those type of resources that should this thing happen again, we'll be better prepared. The things that I've seen in here now, but, you know, so I'm, I, I don't, I, I support waiving rules, but if it, if it doesn't waive, we don't waive rules, and then I'll support next agenda on it.
And, uh, Commissioner Harris, that was, there's never really a consensus. I mean, we sit there, and those, and those of us who are involved with the process, we have things that we consider priority, but I don't know if everybody raised their hand and say, "Well, we agree to everything on here because we all have different interests."
No, I didn't say that. I said, I said Phase Two, which, that's what this is. Otherwise, it wouldn't have got to us.
Also, um, Phase One, I mean, where are we on that? It seemed like it would be easy to at least get some type of, uh, resolution regarding the mental health. I mean, that was easy. We didn't have to think about it. We just put some money, uh, in, in the crisis. The Virgin Unit, you know, wasn't, you know, anything that was innovative. It was just an idea who time had come, and so we threw some money at it. Uh, and, and so I, I suppose it was a good use of, of funding, but it was already something that was in motion. And so where's the, um, the resolution regarding that? We, we still in, we're talking about Phase One, and we're talking about Phase Two rather than somebody, that's, that might be some notion that we're gonna have a Phase Three. Now, if we spend all the money on little bitty items here and there, we're not gonna have the significant impact that Treasury strongly recommended. So, where is, I'd like to see a resolution from something in Phase One before I go to Phase Two. But anyway, I'm not waiving rules, so we'll vote on it next time.
Just put on next agenda. We'll have further discussions.
All right, um, now Cal Franklin.
Uh, good morning. Uh, Commissioners, I'm with AMWAST. I'm the Governmental Affairs Director. Um, we have a contract with the county to pick up, uh, garbage in the, out in the county. Um, we're asking that you put the contract out for RFP. Uh, when we started that contract, fuel was like two dollars and something. It's almost six dollars now. Supply chain issues, national driver shortage, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's costing us a lot of money.
Tell you all diesel fuel too.
Yeah, we go diesel fuel, so it's more than regular fuel. But, uh, we'd like for you to put it back out for RFP. We enjoy picking up the county. We have minimal problems. I think Doug can attest to that. Um, but, um, we need to rebid it. And, uh, it's what I come to bring it to you and ask.
Cal had approached me, I, I guess, a couple of weeks ago about this, and, uh, the, again, the issue is that they cannot continue to operate as a company at the rates that they have provided.
That is correct.
Due to unincreased costs. Um, and I don't have a preference for whoever picks up the garbage out in the county. I get, since I have most of the residents that live in the county, I have, Isaiah has a little bit in, in Flatwood, North Montgomery. Chairman Dean had, uh, uh, the second most.
Yes.
Uh, but the amount of complaints that I have gotten is, I mean, I'm amazed because nobody ever calls you and tells you what a great job you are picking up trash. They just call you when you don't pick it up, or they call you when it spills out. And honestly, I probably hadn't gotten five calls in a year time for what the job they're doing. And most of the calls I get is because people either didn't pay their bill or they didn't put the can out, and they document all this.
Yeah, we've got cameras on the trucks.
Every, yeah, I mean, they documented one last week. A guy complained he wouldn't pick his trash up, and they had cameras and showed pictures. He didn't roll it out to the curb. So, again, but we're in a dilemma here because we have to have, we have to have garbage pickup service.
Commissioner, we're doing this with every contract we have. We're asking to rebid it, um, or give us a price increase that'll work. And, um, so, and I talked to Doug about it, and I talked to Florence about it, and we think it's best if you just put it out for bid. There will be other companies bidding on it too. Um, Elmore County has Air Disposal. Uh, you probably have GFL, but, um, we need, uh, for this to happen.
We're hoping other county, we're hoping somebody, because-
Right.
And Bullock County, nobody did.
No.
Bullock County, so.
Bul, Bullock County had to go back into the business, and I sent some information to Doug, and I think he may afford it to you.
I did.
What it's, what it's looking like statewide, it's, it's, uh, it's pretty hard in this industry right now.
And some other counties, they just did a price increase, but I didn't, I wasn't comfortable doing a price increase simply because, you know, I, I don't-
I haven't seen the contract. Does the contract call for that? Is there, is there a situation where you can request a price increase under the contract?
Yeah, you can do it under CPI, and which will probably we will do until you put it out for RFP, and it's like nine point one percent, the highest ever, and that's gonna be four or five dollars.
But they were requesting about thirty percent increase.
Right. We wanted to go around twenty-five, and it's around eighteen now. And, uh, Doug just thought it'd be better if we went out to RFP.
So, is the CPI, sir, is the, that's Consumer Price Index?
That's correct.
You're talking for all goods and services, or just specific for the operation that you are providing?
No, it's CPI for all goods and services.
That's probably not fair to look at it from that perspective.
Well, it's, it's standard in the industry. If you look at contracts statewide, every one of them has CPI clauses.
Right, but I thought it was related specifically to a certain area.
Water, sewer, trash index.
And that's nine point?
Yeah, nine point one percent.
When, when AMWAST or any company comes to me and says, "I've got the contract, but I'm willing to give it up and go to bid or RFP," that tells me they're not making money.
No, we're losing money. I didn't-
Yeah, that tells me that. So, they're, they're willing to take the chance to lose this contract after buying all this equipment.
You know.
So, but they can't understand. I mean, everything's going up.
To purchase a new truck, it takes a year and a half to get right now. Year and a half.
Well, I, I'm sorry, everybody's, you know, going through that.
Right.
Because of the price increases and, you know, supply, demand, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody blaming this dilemma on the pandemic. I'm not sure the pandemic's responsible for everything.
I know what our fuel costs are.
Yes, sir, I understand. And, and so Florence, I did not see, you sent me the contract, but I did not see the price in the contract. I, I looked for-
Seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents.
Something like that.
Per month, per month.
Yeah, per month.
And you need, okay, you need to get what?
Well, I don't want to say, because if I say, you know, and they're getting into bid process, competition's listed.
Probably gonna be bid on it. I, I talked with the, the commissioner from Bullock County yesterday. He said nobody's, nobody's bidding, uh, you know, so apparently we're just in a situation of-
Yeah, yes, sir.
We need to deal with, yeah.
Their calls to doing business is probably, and, and this industry's about twenty-five to thirty percent.
I know in Elmore County, it's twenty-four dollars a house, and I know that the company up there going back to add for a price increase, so. Ms. Chairman?
Again, so what, this is a situation, they've got, they, either party, where I read the contract, got ninety days to out.
Right.
So, if they exercise that, they haven't done that yet, but if they exercise-
We like it here. We want to stay here. We just got to get a little bit more.
And we appreciate the service you're giving to yourself. I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I, I was just wondering, uh, I don't suppose we've had any, any discussions with, uh, our neighboring counties, uh, in terms of maybe trying to form some type of authority to help reduce the cost? I know they did that, uh, up in Birmingham, Alabama.
Yes, sir, we pick up that authority. We do Hoover, Vestavia, yes, sir. And it doesn't lower the price that much.
It didn't create any real cost saving.
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I studied this thing when y'all sent it to me for an opinion. And the RFP, in my opinion, is the only legal way to go. There's no escalation clause in the contract that you can increase the cost. It's just, without getting an opinion from the Department of Public Examiners, I would be reluctant. So, I think the RFP is the best way, as Cal said, and you say, and that way we're safe. And so, that's my opinion and study of the entire matter.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cal.
Appreciate it.
For Florida, it's something we need to be, start being aware of and, and looking at.
The last item to be considered is award to safeguard pest services for pest control services.
Any questions, discussions? The next agenda.
As a general information item, there is a letter from the Executive Director of the Mental Health Authority regarding the appointment of a member of the Board of Directors. Included is, uh, the recommendation of the appointment of Tara Davis. Her resume is included, as well as a list of the, uh, current board members.
I don't know Ms. Davis, but she has a very impressive resume. Does anybody know her or want to speak on her behalf or?
I think she runs one of the, uh, she says she does a number of things. I think she's run, run the Homely Shielders here, uh, as well. I, I want to know who, who is she proposing, uh, to replace?
It's a vacancy.
Just a vacancy.
Somebody left, I guess, and not-
Uh, there was the death of a board member.
That's what happened.
Okay.
So, if there's no objection, we'll put that on the next agenda.
What county is she from? Montgomery County?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any objection.
So, that will go on the next agenda.
Is that all we have for the information? Uh, Commissioners, do y'all object? If we have anybody that wants to speak at ten o'clock, speaking now, since we got about nineteen minutes?
I don't have an objection. Uh, uh, Ms. Chairman, it's a possible to go back to Item Seven on-
Sure.
The business for the day. There were a dollar amount that was listed under one of the documents there, and I-
That was three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is the state's, uh, the anticipated state funding support for the community corrections.
No, um, maybe it was not Item Seven. I apologize. The one regarding the, uh, the economic development. On, on-
I don't remember that one.
The business for the day, the formal agenda.
Oh, oh, for the formal agenda?
Yes.
Oh, hang on, I'm not looking for that.
You know, we talked about the dollar amount, and that, that, that we need some clarification on, on that, and I think it's in the, uh, the public, it's in the public notice? Yeah, it says here, and I'm just curious. Subject to certain conditions, the county and the city may contribute funds up to three hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Is that just, that's just the county portion? Is anything wrong with, wrong with that wording?
No, that's, that, is that the one talking about Hyundai Transit Project?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, it's based on jobs. It's based on performance of them, so it could get up to that amount.
But that's our portion, the three hundred, yeah. I just wonder, why, why did it say this, the county and the city?
Yeah, so the cities would have been half a million dollars probably.
But we're not concerned about the wording at this point. It's okay. All right. Now, speaking of that, I understand we're contributing, what, some two thousand, what is it, eleven dollars per job? What's, what's the dollar amount per job?
We have so many different ones. It's around two thousand dollars per job, basically.
And so this is the taxpayers of Montgomery County that are supporting this. Do we have any provision to assure that-
Yes.
-these jobs actually go to the folks in Montgomery County to the extent that they are qualified?
No, there's no, there's, there's no restriction that says they have to live in Montgomery County. They can live in, they don't have to live in the state of Alabama if they want to drive here, I guess, but they want to commute. So, there's no, none of these companies, uh, will restrict it to residents of Montgomery County. None of our companies have. I mean, you know.
Well, that, that suggests a concern that, that I would certainly have. I think the Montgomery County resident ought to certainly be given priority, you know, so long as they're qualified. It seems that if they're paying for the jobs with their tax dollars, you know, we, some, ought to be some provision in there, I think. In the Chamber of Commerce, perhaps ought to have some, some role in, in assuring that Montgomery County residents are, are getting priority if they're paying to have the jobs come.
And I may be wrong, but I think it's close to fifty or nearly fifty percent of the people that work in Montgomery don't live in Montgomery now, are workforce.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at. That's concerning. We're funding other counties.
I don't know if there's any way to legally to, to, I guess you could request from these companies to please consider Montgomery County residents. But again, I don't think the, I don't know any way we could put a restriction on that or anything. We can do it, again, we could probably ask to request, and I'll be glad to pass that along, as we are requesting. I mean, it's a good point.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, Florence, one other thing on, and I've noticed on these bids that we have, and like for the, the pest control bid, we had two bids, and, and one of them was three hundred percent higher than the other bid. And that concerns me because we, I wish we, what can we do to get more people to bid? I mean, is it, they just don't want to bid? I mean, I know there's more than two pest control companies in central Alabama and Montgomery. Uh, how do?
All right, if, if, um, if you could pull up the actual, uh, bid tabulation, and I believe it shows how many, um, the bid was sent to how many people?
Does it say bid five? Did it send five people?
Um, like I said, I don't have, I don't have that in-
There's five listings on here now. They're, you know, they're blank, but there's only two that responded. Uh, one from Montgomery and one from Titus.
No, wait a minute, slow down, right, um-
That's it, right there.
I'm sorry, usually, uh, there is an item that identifies how many vendors the bid was emailed to. And the way, that's the vendor list, people who have signed up to receive those bids.
And I mean, and this one worked out really good. I mean, it was a Montgomery company, Monahorny company too. But I'm just saying, just two, and the, the second bidder was way out of line. And so, I just wish we could get more participation somehow and how we can get, I mean, you can't force people to bid, but is there a way besides another way to try to make them aware of it, maybe? Or something, because it, it concerns me going forward because of, uh, you know, we could have been paying three times for pest control than what we should have been paying. So, anyway.
Let us know, Florence, the amount, the, the number of businesses that were sent this particular bid, just out of curiosity. Um, my, my guess is if we had an economist come in and explain this to us, it would be less about, um, knowledge and information regarding the opportunity and more about just the economics of business right now. They, they don't, you know, there's a lot of work out there. They have to, not everybody's bidding for everything that's out there. I mean, this may be considered small potatoes to the bigger, the bigger class, and it just may not be worth it, or they would have to bid so high to make it worth it to them that they just don't even do it.
No, I'm just curious. Anybody else on the commission have anything before I open it up for their, uh, comments from the public for the next five, ten minutes? Is anybody here to, uh, speak at ten o'clock? Is anybody on the list? Okay, anything else? If not, we'll take a ten, twelve-minute recess.